Super Hit, 1049 W A X I, Rockville, Clinton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna open a public hearing real quick for the approval of rates. Got questions, any comments?
Guess not. I'll move.
Second. Would you mind to do them separately?
Okay, I'll give me the first one.
So I'm going to give you the electric. I have a number of these yet, so I'll get ordinance numbers.
Okay, I make a motion for approval of the ordinance amending the rates and charges for the electric utility works.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Storm water rates next, please.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the rates and charges for the storm water utility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Not so far.
Okay, water rates next, please.
Okay, I make a motion on the ordinance amending the rates and charges for the water works utility.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And I have the sewer rates as well.
It's the last one, I hope.
For twenty-three, yes.
Oh, good. I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the rates and charges for the sewage works utility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Do you have an amendment that will apply in January of twenty-four for bill of March twenty-four billing period for water only, if approved, please?
I make a motion on the ordinance amending water rates, I mean the rates and charges for the water works utility that would be for the respective first of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Say we close this meeting. Somebody want to go ahead?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, we will open our regular session. Okay, good. First order of business could be election of officers or appointments.
Do you want to do the, while you're signing those, do you want to be careful how to do the thing?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, I sent out the schedules, there's a payroll schedule, of course, we'll continue to pay biweekly, but there is a payroll schedule that needs to be approved for retirement as well. There's a town council meeting, I have these set for the first and third Mondays continuously at five P M. With the exception of any holidays that may fall on a Monday, those meetings are set to Tuesday, which I have three of those holidays, one being today's meeting. If you want to keep the meeting schedule as is. There's also a twenty-three holiday schedule that I sent out as well, and it does near the state schedule as well, if we want to continue those holidays.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll just have him sign it. Let him sign.
Thank you.
You did great. No, Liddy didn't.
Okay. Thank you. Let me get my cheap sheet here. Okay.
Maybe it's over there. Sure it is.
Alright, first up's the president.
Well, I've been pleased with your performance, David, you take on a lot of, a lot of work that, well, most people don't realize it comes with the job. It's an impression I have, it's just a lot of, a lot of phone calls, you have to call someone here, someone there, calls, yeah, calls, it's just, it's always something going on. So yeah, I mean, I just, I know I sure don't want that extra work, and I move, I move that David be our president for twenty twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, anybody, anybody? Vice president?
Well, again, I've been happy with Melissa's vice president, she has served the town well in that capacity, so I think we should keep her as a vice president for twenty twenty-three.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. All in favor? Oppose? About the town attorney?
I move we retain Nick.
I second.
Can I get, did you second that?
Yeah.
All in favor? Town liaison?
I move we retain Jeff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you want to just skip it? Okay, fire chief?
I move we retain Mr. Beach.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Building commission?
Move to retain Josh.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The West Centrals?
Yeah, sorry, ten R two, the rest of them, I went ahead and put on there, it's just kind of a, if you want to run down through there and just name those particular people. I know I put a plus on the one, the copy that you have, you're currently part on the West Central Solid Waste District. You were actually on there with Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
I didn't know if another party, another member, council member, or another public member wanted to be part of that, or if that's necessary.
Well, we have two appointments from the town, so I, I just almost always go unless there's a serious, serious conflict, but important thing to have quorum over there, this is, is with any meeting.
When do they meet?
Oh, they meet, God, it's Wednesdays typically, it's at nine in the morning. I like it. Take a look at that, yeah, the first meeting, oh, did I grab the wrong, no, I didn't grab the wrong one, okay, I've had my both calendars out this year. I guess first meeting's in February. Well, maybe I didn't write them down.
I have their schedules.
I think they are, but yeah, it's five, four or five meetings a year, they have great breakfast, I missed one in December, because I have employees sick, they have great breakfast, don't miss a December meeting, they, this gets ingrained with them, but they, they usually have.
No, that's impala.
Yeah, Steve is on this one, but yeah, it's all about the, mainly what their function is, the dumpsters out at, well, it used to be ShopCo, that type of stuff.
It comes with the chair.
Okay, it sounds like we have a volunteer.
Yep.
You want to notify?
Jane Colisi.
Cameron's been on that for the council, so he'll know about it.
You don't, I bet you have her email, just put in Jane, I bet. Jane Colisi, C O L L.
C O L L I S S I, or one L, C O L I S S I?
Alright, yeah, I'll take care of it.
For the West Central Solid District, Solid Waste District, it's you and Chris, right? Impala board would be Keith Fisher. Cemetery board, Park, Carla. We got room for one more if you're.
Cemetery board, you're gonna put down every board.
That'd be the only two.
Yeah, that's what I hear. I'm just dying to get them now.
Do what?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you stepping up or are you stepping down?
We do have a meeting scheduled for them, the eighteenth of January, it's six P M. in the evening, it's a Wednesday.
Eighteenth, I think?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you going to find a replacement?
Yeah.
Police commissions, Liddy, Sandy Bemis, John Frank, double Y side, Kevin Cowens, park boards, Kim Cooper, Melissa, Buell, Liddy, Leanne Rubek. Is that Marsha?
Delicia.
Oh, okay.
I was scribbling at this point.
Okay. Planning commission.
Paula Peterson.
Oh, Paula Peterson, okay. Ronnie Hill?
Ron, Ronnie.
Ronnie Hill? Oh, okay, Ronnie. Jeff Gooch, Matt Nelson, and Leanne Rubek.
And me. Did I finally get off?
You are, you are on one of the two.
I was on planning, I can't be on zoning.
You're, yeah, I just messed that up, because I think I put you somewhere else, I put you, I added you somewhere else. It's basically the same members, except for you're, you're the addition to planning.
You're on the B C A.
No, I can't be on.
But she's on planning, so that's, I messed that up.
I better work that out too. So I don't say it. Storm boards, Steve Waltz, Kevin Cowens, Park. Alcohol and tobacco is Doug Y. Side. West Central Economic Development is Doug Y. Side, Melissa. Park County Convention and Visitors Commissions, Kim Cooper and John Bonomo. Redevelopment is me and Park. B C A is.
Those planning commission, planning commission without Liddy.
Okay, we want them renamed. Main Street Liaison is Melissa and Hazard Migration Planning is Liddy, and I believe that's it.
Those were just all ones that have transpired over the last year, or possibly some of them over the last year.
Well, everybody's willing to, I assume everybody's aware that they're, for the most part.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think so, I just wanted to make sure we ran through all of those, if anybody had any, anything they wanted to say about any of those boards, if anybody was interested in maybe leaving a board, or interested in a different board, just wanted to make sure you all had the same record that I have.
Well, I'd like to bring something up, but not until we get through these, because there's another, another board possibly that used to exist that we could resurrect for a particular purpose. I'm not sure if that's any, anyway, let's do these first.
We're done with that, I mean, we're gonna move on to Brandy's, unless you wanna do this.
Do we need to approve those, or, I mean, we don't need to approve those?
I think you just, you ran through what I needed approval on originally, for those first six or eight positions there, I just wanted to mention the others, if anybody had anything they wanted to say.
Yeah, that's on the board I'm talking about, we had it back in twelve, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, myself and Gary Hanner and Larry Kinnon, he was on it, I'm not sure it was.
Economic Development.
Was it Rockville Economic Development? And it came up in a conversation about perhaps a committee being formed for use of property in town, I believe is how it was stated.
Just to make sure that people are following our protocols and.
Yeah, I assume, you know, that would deal with zoning and various factors and property use, but, so I thought, well, instead of another committee, we could resurrect this board that hasn't been around for a few, three-member board. And I know the committee idea came, I think Luke Waltz was bringing it up, because it started back when we had that second Dollar General store wanting to locate down there. I don't know what, what do you folks think, I mean?
I was thinking at one time we had to have it helped with a grant or something.
I don't remember exactly, Liddy, getting old, but.
I mean, I don't, I think we eventually thought it was kind of a redundancy with planning and zoning.
Well, maybe, I don't know, a lot of times what it's like with that Dollar General, just, we didn't really know much about until they, they just sort of popped up, what, request does only change, there was no discussion, so I don't know.
Are you thinking then, if a business coming to town versus it going through the B C A process first, there being an economic development process, maybe?
Well, perhaps, that seems to be the thought that I, that I got from, from what I've heard. And yeah, another issue, they just like the zoning on, and I don't know that we can change it, but the zoning, say, on Howard Avenue, you know, I have a rather nasty text from an individual that's not happy that we sold that for multi-family use again. Well, they're assuming that's what it'll be, we don't know, all I know is a proper bid was received and we accepted it, but.
It was already R two, though, we didn't change anything.
Right, and whether or not it can be changed to R one, that's this one individual's, why didn't, why, why did we allow this to happen? We cleaned up that one real property, and I, I don't know if this board would be appropriate for such a.
Does, does Josh do any kind of plan review or anything when he's doing, it's, it sounds like that's sort of what that would be for, maybe?
Yeah, I think, haven't you guys been, have you guys been, Josh and you and?
Yeah, we talked about doing some things, and, and I think that's kind of where Park was going with, when Luke brought that up too, but we just don't know how, how to fit those pieces together, really, because, like I said, unless they go to a zoning board for an appeal or ask for a variance, there, there's really not a whole heck lot that you can do, except make sure they're zoned where they're supposed to be zoned, and, you know, Josh does a good job on making sure that's the case. So I, I think there's a little bit of room there, but trying to hammer out what the goals would be and who would do that, I think, would require a little bit of thought.
Well, who would have final say over how a business is built as far as retention ponds, detention ponds, turning lanes, you know, having enough room for semis to turn?
Turning lanes, I know Josh does that because it has to involve the, the fire department's access and that kind of thing, so I know he does a lot of that, but as far as detention retention ponds, you know, I think that's up to the engineering firm that designs the place.
But, I mean, don't, but somebody in Rockville have to approve that?
Well, approve what, because I don't know of any ordinance that says you have to have.
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Other than a building permit, so I don't know if Josh would, has that ability to review those or not.
I would think you had, is a building a factor, I would think that maybe.
Size determines retention.
Seems like there's some redundancy that would be occurring, and maybe that if there were missing some pieces, that they could be added on to the boards that are already.
Yeah, well, I guess where I've come from, from this recent tax, and just, just, perhaps there needs to be review of the overall zoning in the town of Rockville, is anything we need to change? I mean, I don't know, we can change zoning in, from an R two to R one only, I don't think that's very easy.
There's a long process, I can research and give you guys information on if you want to, but.
Yeah, I think we've been down this road before, and it's really difficult to do, landlords in Indiana, some of the big landlords lobbied pretty good several years back to make it harder to keep them.
But generally, once somebody's in there in the R two, it's not like you're gonna be able, they've built the structure and.
Well, yeah, you can't change.
I think what we said was if it is six months without a business, then it can revert back to, remember we did that?
Well, there, there's properties that had an exception before, that was our, say, say it was, it was residential, and it got, it received an exception, whatever you call it, for, for, for business. A business variance, and then, once that business is out for six months, it went back to residential.
That's Indiana code, though, as far as special exceptions or variances and things like that, but that's different, when the property's already zoned, R two, it's R two. Barring somebody petitioning to change it to R one or something else.
It'd make a good thing to have Josh come in too, because I know that he developed a kind of a flow chart of how all this works, and I'm trying to rack my brain to remember all the pieces, and there are several pieces involved in it. But I know he's kind of got it mapped out linearly, so it's a little bit easier to.
Well, who would be, who would be the board neck to review the zoning in town of Rockville? That's the zone, the B C A. Well, I would like to see the B C A look at the zoning and just see if they had any suggestions, and when do they meet again?
They're in the planning, really good joint meeting together, usually. Planning and zoning usually meet together, so that would be the.
That's our third day.
When is it? But I mean, do we really need to review the plan or the zoning? Is there one scheduled? I mean, do we need to, or is it based just on this complaint?
Well, I.
And if there's a formal grievance, then I would say they need to file a formal grievance.
Well, they have no, no basis for, I mean, they just.
They're just complaining.
They're just complaining.
Well, it was up for sale and they didn't bid on it.
Well, I know, I know. But should we, should we, should we be concerned, I guess, is the question, about our current zoning in the town of Rockville, I don't know.
Well, that's up to you guys, but.
We haven't looked at it for a while, I can't tell you what's what, you know, I have few ideas where the lines are for business and residential, but as far as having R two, and I think most of the town of Rockville, it's residential, is R one, R two. And, well, I don't, this board has no concern, I'm not gonna presume anymore, I mean, I just thought it might be something to review.
Well, if we've got a B C A and planning, buying, zoning, I, I mean, it's kind of redundant, so.
Well, I suggest we move on then, we're burning up valuable time.
So, Brandy, are you ready?
I only have, I've worked on our ordinances, so I just have claims, there's our regular payroll claims, and then now the four sixty-four, two eighty-five, thirty-three for approval, and there was a separate, because being the end of the year, is a payroll claim for one forty-two through sixty-seven fifty-six.
Motion to approve.
Hold on. I know, we looked at, but we didn't look at.
That's what I was waiting on, hold on.
You and I talked about for a minute, we didn't share it with the board, you know, we've got our, what was that, we paid our stormwater and our one of two sewer loans there. I see we paid for the software, Jeff, for the water H two O, do we have that installed, or?
Yeah, we already have one phone conference with them and waiting on their, them to assign our direct rest.
Okay, well, I just had another question about this, this, this install temporary connection sewer plant, what was that all about, Sycamore Engineering, what was that they were doing, it's thirty-seven thousand dollar bill? That was the temporary connection for sewage equipment, something about, you guys, we were just talking about for a minute.
Pump controls down at the.
Pump controls?
It wasn't thirty thousand, was it?
It was thirty-seven.
I think it was thirty-seven.
Well, that's probably the switchgear.
Yes.
The switchgear.
The switchgear, they're gonna start on that, I mean, we, that was approved almost a year ago.
It's been that long?
Yeah.
Wow.
It took a long time to get a switchgear in.
Okay.
Most of the stuff that they're working on right now is stuff we approved almost a year ago.
Okay, okay, well, that's why.
I got a pump back today, that we pulled out in the spring. I mean, it's crazy.
Well, that's why it doesn't come in, it's not my recent memory, but, okay.
You good with everything?
I'm, I'm just dandy, you made a motion, I'll second.
I second.
You second, we already got a second.
All in favor?
I nod, aye.
Aye. See, what's that, give me the.
Another thing I have are some billing adjustments for seven fifty seventeen, and it looks like some of those are just a correction of auto pay, there was a deposit refund, there was a deposit back to me and the action for somebody that had moved, so those funds have to go back to the department, not to customer. And then there's actually another, it was just a credit and debit wash, so that totals seven fifty seventeen.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure, sweet, Nick?
Quick update on three oh four Howard, I did talk with the winning bid, we should be closing within ninety days, I indicated to him that I could do the deed in the sales disclosure, bid that if they wanted title insurance, that'd be something extra, so he's gonna get back with me on whether he's doing title insurance or not, but expect the closing within ninety days. We have sixteen current ordinance violations open, and that's not including ones that we've got judgments on and fines on, that they haven't corrected behavior, there's several of those, so I guess my question would be direction from the town on how you'd like to proceed, there's a part of that statute that allows for the town to clean it up, but for the cost to be incurred by the property owner, has a lien against the property, that could be a path to go down, we've done that before, so there's some liability that can be there too. So if we are gonna do that, I'd want the judge to order.
Is it occupied property?
Some of them are, yeah, others are not, there's one that's been vacated over by the park that's now empty, so we could seek a court order from the judge allowing that to be cleaned up.
Is that the one on Isabel Street?
They are, they've been evicted, but, but, so I guess preference from the town on that, as far as leave the fines and, or how you want to proceed on that. In the past, we've incurred some legal issues on cleaning up properties such as that, so.
I think we're in a different situation, maybe, that that wouldn't happen.
Right, so I mean, I, I guess, you know, the two avenues we could proceed down is to enforce the judgment, seek to garnish or levy wages, things like that, which probably is not gonna be fruitful, or we could have the property cleaned up and attach it as a lien to the property, on those, and there's about three or four like that throughout town.
Well, the property most likely have to sell before we'd ever receive the funds.
Right, yeah, you won't get any money unless the property were to sell, so, I mean, you'd be incurring property on, or money, debt on a property that you're not gonna be able to collect on.
Are we fining these properties?
We are, but that goes on as a judgment, so it's a lien on the property.
So it's just adding up there, so do we want to add more to that lien?
I mean, I could, I could take them back, say they're still non-compliant, tack more on the lien, and you get to the point where if you get to a certain threshold, over half of the property value, you can foreclose your lien on the property. So then you could actually take the property.
Oh, that's lovely.
So those are things for you guys to consider, you don't have to tell me anything today, but there are two or three of those properties in town that have been a problem repetitively.
So if they're rentals, doesn't it go on whoever owns the property?
Whoever owns the property, they're responsible for the property.
Wouldn't they have some interest in cleaning them up rather than losing potential income?
And they've been contacted and unwilling to clean them up?
Some of them have a twenty-five hundred dollar lien on them, there's at least two that I can think of off the top of my head to have a twenty-five hundred dollar lien on for not cleaning the property. But there's also one that's been evicted, and there's one that's the subject of, somebody died, there's no estate opened, and it's just sitting there vacant, nobody owns it, it's on Erie, so.
If some of those houses there are on, are registered with the housing authority, is there a way to take them off of that as potential rental properties if they don't?
I don't know about that, I could look into that.
As far as cleanup, what are we talking about, needs to be cleaned up, is it brush, is it trash, is it car?
Most of them are brush and trash, I mean, I, I would be very hesitant for you to get into anything structural, but if it's brush or trash, you know, that's.
Been there, done.
That's, that's different.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are clothes and appliances and.
Right, I mean, it could be disposed.
Well, is that couch still sitting over at York Commission for food's sake? Well, how do they get away with that, they can just set a couch out there?
So, waiting on the new year, in contact with Nick, I felt it wouldn't be very fruitful to.
Okay.
Attack at the end of the year.
That's on the owner of property there?
So Bill's got a number of properties that we, we're just, since we were in December, that we're gonna wait till January to file, that way it's a new year.
Well, I'm inclined, as long as it's not structural, that we have equipment, take a day. Look at each other.
We're cleared up for them then?
Well.
Can we charge them?
You can, and you put the charges and lien on the property, but whether or not I can recover that out of property, I can't promise you that.
Right, I understand, but.
But at the end of the day, the property looks better than it does. I know, how far are we out from selling it?
I don't have that tally, I mean, I don't know, one of them, the highest one I have is twenty-five hundred, so whatever the property's worth versus twenty-five hundred, so it's probably significantly.
I mean, if they, if they junk it up again after we clean it, it becomes whatever you want to call it, after we clean it up, we can go back, keep tacking, fines on.
In previous years, you guys have done, not this board, but, you know, a decade ago, they did that some, I think, a little bit, not a lot, but we got away from that a little bit because there's a current cost on the town, and so we've been using our nuisance. Um, we got away from that a little bit because of the current cost on the town, and so we've been using our nuisance statute to try to clean these properties up. And honestly, I went through and there were sixty that we filed since I've been here, and we have sixteen currently open, so we've cleaned up quite a bit of the properties. It's just, they're still, and then you accrue new properties too, you know? I, I bet Bill probably has six to eight that I haven't even seen yet, that, so we're probably somewhere around twenty to twenty-four properties that we're still actively working on.
There was a while we were just mowing properties, not going.
So.
So I, I guess it's just something you guys as a board need to think about is that if they're not, if these liens and fines aren't working, do we want to do something else? Or do you just want to keep accruing liens and fines? And like I said, you don't have to tell me today. It's just something we hadn't talked about, but.
Some of them that are just non-productive at all, I say you clean it up once and.
Do we have to get a court order?
I would feel more comfort, the statute allows you to do it on your own, but I'm always gonna tell you, I think we should get an order from the judge, because that's covering, that's better.
I just don't want them to get hurt, you know?
Right, that's, that's, that's why I'd rather have a court order. That way, we're not defending ourselves. We're saying here, a judge said we can do this.
Yeah. Well, what do you guys think?
And I would, and issue doing like exterior stuff.
Yeah.
But I think some of those homes, I would have a hard time sending my guys.
Oh, yeah.
Without complete hazmat suits and.
This would be trash pickup, weeding, brush, that kind of thing, if we did go that route. Um, and I can get with Jeff and Bill and kind of see how many of these there are, but it's just a new way to think about these properties. Because some of these properties, it doesn't matter how many fines I put on them, they're just not gonna clean.
Well, I'd say we do, we get a court order on the properties.
Besides the fines and then the foreclosure eventually. Yeah. But if we have a court order and we clean it up and we put that on there, it accrues faster than the fines accrue. If it costs us five grand to clean up the property, that directly goes on the lien.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second.
Call in favor.
Do we have to have a, like a rate?
No, they just keep track of their time and is that hourly rate this one?
We can invoice every time we do a clean.
Yep.
So I guess just figure out how many properties you want, we should do this.
They used to do it on a mowing only. It wasn't property cleanup, but this nuisance statute allows us to actually physically go in and clean the property. It's just it.
Okay.
Manpower, time, and then my ability to collect off these.
Okay.
We've passed a motion.
We had a second. Uh, we're, yeah, just figure out what properties you recommend that this be done to, and we'll, we'll move on.
So then it's at the equipment rates we talked about before.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then hourly rates?
We just receive the invoice from Jeff and his guys, and I attach it as a lien on the property. And then we can go through a process where it gets sold at tax sale for not paying those needs though. So that's a different route to go also, but tax sale takes eighteen months.
Well, speaking of, so what's this, what do we do with South Jefferson? Have we relistened?
We haven't had any.
Nobody bid on it, so it's, we can sell it to whatever, however we want to do that, so.
Well, we need to get it back out there in the market. What's, what's procedure?
I mean.
So if nobody bid, can we take a lower bid now?
Yeah, you can. But you still have to have somebody.
Probably just gonna want to buy it, tear it down.
We tried to sell it for an average of two appraisals and nobody bid on it, so.
So how do we advertise?
So you put an advertisement in the paper saying, hey, we have this property, make an offer?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if you want to put a threshold, you can put a threshold, but.
Probably our minimum bid or.
I've been saying right here.
No, but I mean, it maybe tearing it down would have exceeded.
Well, perhaps. But yeah, we just need to get it back out there and, and, and taking offers now, accepting offers. I don't know what.
I mean, you could even have an agent sell it, I suppose, but I, I don't think many of them there were one to take that particular one, but.
Yeah, I.
Might be better off just to.
So we can put it in the face.
It'd be like that and having.
Big old dumpster and.
Yeah.
And take the backhoe, just get steering.
That's different. We own that property, so us doing stuff, it's different than us doing stuff to.
Right.
It'd be like fixing this up, you know?
Well, for the time being, let's just get it re-advertised, however we want to advertise it.
Can you sell that under the terms of it being cleaned up over a certain period of time?
We can do a contingent sale. I did that for Marshall on a property on Main Street there in Marshall, where it's contingent on them cleaning it up and.
I just feel like if you have a sale and you're gonna sell it for whatever.
Yeah.
That person is not gonna be.
Then we won't finalize the deed until the properties.
Okay. And then I have one question back on the cleanup of property and mowing. Um, this is obviously before both of us, but how was the mowing only handled? I, was that through utility? Because I think that's, makes more sense to collect those funds at the time versus trying to have Nick put it on a property. I mean, these are, they're mowing things, they're not.
I don't know how they were doing it, but I mean, generally, I don't think we want to be a mowing service.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to bill anybody for going in this.
I don't know that we were collecting, we were just mowing.
We were not collecting.
We were just mowing.
No, they, you're right, they were just going out, no, nobody.
We were supposed to be keeping track of.
So it wasn't being billed in addition to in any way?
Fifty dollars.
Because I've received a couple of them in the past, probably six months or so, but I think just going and mowing somebody's property and then giving it to Nick for fifty dollars, I mean, that just seems foolish. It's a, you know?
That's not happening.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, we, we need to collect from those people immediately upon what they're billing, if that's what needs to be handled.
My preference would be you just not mow those properties.
I wouldn't either, but.
I think it needs to be higher than what a contractor would charge, see, instead of fifty bucks.
I understand.
How it smells, all that, you guys coming mow my yard for fifty bucks.
Well, and see, that's what, that's what people are doing, though, is you go and mow somebody's, and say, well, I'll charge you fifty dollars. They're not gonna mow again, so that's why I'm thinking, I, I don't, I don't think that we should be mowing people's property.
Till it got about mid, mid.
I mean, if.
Between your ankles and knees.
You don't want to be in the business of them paying you upfront to mow, because you don't want to be a mowing business. And then secondly, if they don't pay you upfront, you're never gonna collect.
Trust me, nobody paid us upfront.
Yeah, I know, it is being done for free.
Okay.
But.
That was my question, because I just, um, I, I'm not in favor of the mowing invoices and.
Okay, so I'll get with Jeff and Bill and come up with a short list on ones that we think we could do something with. And then I can get something from the judge authorizing us to do it. Um, but we should have about six to eight new filings at the start of the year. Also, that put us up around twenty to twenty-four ordinances that we're pursuing, so that's all I had.
Do what you want to do about this thing, that's it.
I do.
I'm gonna go back and look at that other contract and then report back to you, if that's okay.
Yeah, fine.
It's been enough time that I've forgotten what it said, but I think I remember what it said, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick. Will?
Trace, Brady? Trace Anderson, Brady Walters, uh, these are our new patrolmen. Trace is already an academy graduate, so, uh, after riding around with Ian for a while, uh, learning the town, learning the differences between the agency he was at and the agency here. Uh, he'll be out on his own, trolling in no time. Uh, Brady is currently in pretty basic, uh, so his training's just about over. And then he'll be riding with officers for, uh, field training, officer training, and, uh, then hopefully within a couple of months, he'll be released on his own.
Good deal.
Let's see, go to the academy.
Thank you. It hasn't been scheduled yet.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So you rode around with Ian and you still want to be here?
Yeah.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Knows you were back.
He's around, knows you were in.
Okay, thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have statistics for December, five hundred and four calls, one felony, twelve misdemeanors, eleven infractions, and forty-four warnings. Twenty-five in criminal investigations, thirteen in which were, uh, violent, drug and alcohol cases there were four, ordinance violations there were nine. Warrant services, two, property damage hit and run, eight, medical calls, uh, welfare checks, immediate detentions, twenty-four, traffic stops, sixty-three. Property extra duty checks, two hundred and twenty, alarms, five, pursuits, one, death investigation, overdose, one, three fights, uh, paper service, eighteen. Fraud theft, six, domestic, uh, situation, six, and battery, three.
Well, back to the J four service. Now, if I understand that correctly, you're doing that on behalf of the county?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and those are in town, and it, it does, it, it oftentimes allows us to know that people have moved into town that maybe we're trying to keep track of, so that they're not doing anything nefarious. Uh, so it kind of lets us know, hey, they're living here, otherwise we may not have known. Uh, helps, helps county out.
Mm-hmm.
Usually not taking more than five minutes per paper.
And they're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they like it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We've left there for ourselves, the shift, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, for the year, we had four hundred and twenty-eight criminal investigations, eighty accident reports, fifty incident reports, and forty-six inbounds. Hundred and sixty-six arrests, one thousand one hundred and twenty traffic stops, one hundred and twenty-seven medical calls, one hundred and four alarms, one hundred and ten crashes. Hundred and fifty-nine ordinance violations, twenty-nine fire calls, one hundred and twenty theft or fraud, six drive-offs at the gas station. Uh, sixteen, uh, attempted suicides, four overdoses, one hundred and sixty-six transportation or traffic control details. Uh, fifty-seven bin checks, forty-seven lockouts, uh, property checks, three hundred and sixty-five, warrants, seventy, welfare checks, emergency detention, immediate detention, hundred and twenty. Sex offenses, eighteen, animal complaints, ninety-seven, domestic situations, one hundred and twenty-two impaired persons. Uh, drivers, fifty-one, assist another agency, twenty-three, juvenile school incidents, ninety, speeding or reckless driving, seventy-nine, suspicious vehicles or persons, one hundred and sixty-six. Trespassing or unwanted guests, fifty-nine, paper service for the year is a hundred and seventy, uh, burglary, twenty-nine, battery and such, twenty-seven, stalking, harassment, sixty-seven, pursuits, four. Child abuse, neglect, nine, shots fired, three, repossession, six, jail incidents, eleven, death investigations, five, criminal mischief, twenty-five, drug investigations, nineteen. Uh, violent nature calls are as follows, immediate or emergency detentions, hundred and twenty, domestic situations, hundred and twenty-two, harassment, stalking, sixty-seven, impaired persons, drivers, fifty-one. Suicide attempted, sixteen, warrant service, seventy, uh, sex offense, eighteen, drug investigations, nineteen, fights, twelve, pursuit, four, shots fired, three, child abuse, neglect, nine, and battery, fifteen.
So on, on this sheet, this is, this, it's the total calls for the year.
Yes.
Is that nine-one-one plus other types of calls or, I mean, I get confused sometimes in the past.
So like that four thousand thirty-one?
Yeah.
That, that's a total, and when I say a total, that's loosely, that is a total of everything we've done. Uh, oftentimes you call, you have a call at the sheriff's department, it may not get logged into the CAD. So out of all the calls that the dispatcher has logged in, there's four thousand thirty-one calls for the year, so.
Okay.
We may stop somebody and say, hey, don't do that, or, you know, get out of the street, you're causing a road hazard, call that into dispatch. They may not enter that, which would be an extra call that we were on that they didn't necessarily enter, but.
Mm-hmm.
The best we can figure for what we have in the computers, four thousand thirty-one.
Okay. About ten percent's apparently out of town.
Yes.
Uh, which doesn't seem too bad. I mean, that, that's non-traffic stop, so that, is that, is that pretty much when you get an assist, call for an assist or?
Call for an assist. Uh, sometimes we are called, uh, for instance, uh, if we, we had a call the other day where, uh, a car had backed into the Coverbridge Motel.
Okay, just, yeah.
And it's, you know.
Ten feet outside of town.
Right, but that is out of town, so you're gonna have those calls as well as, you know, if I'm checking the wellfields and there's somebody out there at the wellfields that shouldn't be, that's out of town, but that's town property, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah.
That would be considered out of town also.
You presented this to the Public Safety Commission yet?
Uh, the twelfth.
Twelfth, okay.
Well, actually, I think they got an email with that.
Okay, okay. Well, good, yeah.
So if I'm hearing that correctly, in like a few weeks, we're gonna have actually six officers working at the same time, and I thought I wouldn't live to see it. I still might not.
Yeah.
Be careful.
I'm gonna talk Hannah Liz, Liz, she.
But I know.
A month and a half.
Got what you got, Bill?
Has all happened.
Thank you. Yep? Yep, uh, I don't have my normal long list for us tonight, because I knew we had a lot of other things to go through, so we'll keep kind of brief. Uh, first of all, thank you for reappointing to the position. I appreciate that. Uh, second, we do have a pretty good group of candidates, I feel, uh, for both the general labor and the electric apprenticeship. We've got four or five for the apprenticeship and about a dozen for general labor, so I'm pretty excited about that and starting the new year with, with a few more people on hand and being able to get a few more things done. Really, that's all I've got at this point, other than just looking forward to getting some of the, the grant things done, working on Anderson, Strawberry, or Anderson, uh, I'll have a cost estimate for you on that. Uh, also Walton and.
Howard.
Howard. Uh, I've divided the, the town into three segments, as per you guys' request.
What were your bases? How, how, how'd you do that, Jeff?
Uh, I looked at the map for a little while, and I think going into thirds makes a little bit more sense than fours. Um, going north of Howard Avenue out to Strawberry Road, and then using Howard Street as the southern boundary of that northern third, okay? And then from Howard Street south east to Market Street would be a second quadrant or third. And then everything west of that would be the, the third sector.
Okay.
So we can use that to, to kind of divvy up storm drains and tree cutting and, and those kinds of things.
And yeah, even.
About four months in each area.
Even road work, uh, as far as your patching and whatnot, uh, well, you know, you need to come up with a schedule and then present that, present that to your, uh, department head.
Schedules are always challenging, you know, you can put them on paper and everything, but we all have those issues.
Right.
Pop up out of nowhere, but, yeah, we.
One thing I ought to ask about the brush and tree trimming, um, I mean, isn't it just about like, you know, getting a haircut certain times of the month? Sometimes you promote growth and sometimes you don't.
I think so. Uh, I'm not an expert on it by any means, but, uh, I, I know the guys like to cut it a little bit more. Um, in the fall and the spring, because you don't have to contend with all the leaves and stuff. But I've always heard that in pruning, you always want to do your pruning in months that end in R, so.
Well, I guess my theory is just cut it when you can get it in your schedule.
But.
I mean, I'm not, we're not.
That's what we're gonna have to do.
That, that seems realistic. I don't think RMC worries about the time of the year, that they just have their, they have four quadrants and they want to get one done a year. They tried to. And so I wouldn't worry about anything but get it done.
You know, hopefully with a few more hands, we'll.
Right.
Be able to do that.
Well, you know, you realize your hiring decisions will impact your productivity, I'm, I'm sure, and, and, uh, yeah, it, it's just, we, we need to, uh, get some, because you don't know. You don't know.
It's always a challenge.
Of the individual that you're considering, but, uh, uh, make the best decision you can and hope it's a right one. Well, that, oh, parking lot. Uh, Roger, you know, he, he, he came up with the design last year, and apparently there's what else going on? There's some, some discussion.
Well, yeah, we're looking to do some couple of things. I think Roger's involved in it, didn't he? I mean, as far as you know.
Uh, I really haven't talked to him with a lot about it. I know that, you know, he's aware of the, one of the curbs and that kind of stuff, but, uh.
Well, ideally, Jeff, we, we should try to bid that same time we, we bid out Community Crossing two thousand one, two thousand twenty-three. We have the two thousand twenty-two, two.
Yes.
And then we have the other one we're gonna have by the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
You know, I was thinking if we could get that parking lot design firmed up, maybe we could bid at the same time we bid out the.
Community Crossings.
Community Crossing two oh two three, number one. Maybe, maybe save a little money.
Uh, yeah, I, I get where you're going with that, but we kind of need plans as far as do you want lights and that thing? I know some people are working on, uh, lights, maybe no lights.
Well. All we're doing right now is just sending that, the first Community Crossing for twenty-three. We're just submitting that to the state. And once we get it, that's when we put it out to bid.
For.
Yeah, but you gotta have a design. I mean, we gotta know what we're doing, where it's gonna be, so they can dig it in, get it taken care of.
Run our con, con.
Right, right, but we won't be, we won't be seeking bids on the Community Crossing, the roads. We get approval from the state first.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we put it out to bid.
For, for the Community Crossings, but the parking lot is not a Community Crossing.
I know it's not, but we can bid both those at the same time, as separate projects, but the same contractor could do both. Yeah, so we'll have several months, probably two, three, maybe four, before we'll have a parking lot.
When do they usually, is it May, when they name?
Generally.
But yeah, I know that there, there's a curbs, the lights, and the lights is something this other group's been talking about, and they, we need to make sure that group's talking to Roger, I guess, and, and, uh, yeah, let's get that firmed up. We had a rough design last year. yeah, let's get that firmed up, we had a rough design last year. Uh, wh-when's, uh, IMPA gonna be doing their charging station?
Anytime that we can get bored over at, uh, the depot, and we're also, that, that involves conduit too, so.
Yeah.
That comes back to the, to the plan for the conduit and the parking lot. Now, the depot, we, we're good to go on that, we can put it in anytime the, uh, U-Max available to come in and board the conduit. I mean, we have the designs, we have the plans, we have all that, it's just.
Well, the deal with the conduit at the parking lot, they were talking about running conduit all the way around there.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to come up, I mean, wherever those light posts are gonna be, you're gonna have to turn that up with sweeps and.
Give me a measuring tape in a half an hour, I can tell you.
Well, they, I believe there's a design out there.
Well, who's got the design?
Well, I believe the, it's in this office somewhere.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to be coordination with Roger, I don't, this other group, this other group has a form, what's it called? Well, the one, the Nick.
Creating Spaces, is that what you're talking about?
I guess, I'm not sure, is it?
I thought it was the bike and.
No, that's something else.
Path group.
See, you're confused like me, yeah, um.
That's just the planning for that twenty thousand.
Grant for the parking lot.
Okay, the grant for the parking lot.
That is, uh, Creating Spaces.
Creating Spaces, so I guess that's a group. I know.
Yeah, I don't know anything.
While I'm trying to get a grasp, you know, what, what are we doing?
With Mandy and have a discussion because he was bringing up some lighting situation, and we're already doing some lighting situation, so there just needs to be a better communication piece there. When we're not communicating, things are falling apart, things are getting delayed, so there needs to be that communication happening.
Well, who's, who's, who's head of that group?
Mandy is, um, working with the lady on applying for that grant.
Okay, so we're gonna get money from that for lighting and there's some matching money coming in.
Yes.
And that's why we're doing it, 'cause we can get matching money, Jeff, I think that's why this Creating Space thing is, is, uh, exists, to help.
But that'll, that'll include, I mean, that grant will include, you know, everything that we want to do, except blacktop that drive or that, that parking.
Or blacktop a curb.
Blacktop or, yeah.
Well, I think I brought it up last meeting, Jeff, a couple of things we need to look at over there when we try to blacktop that is that do an apron and entryway into the Dennis parking lot, it's just, the, 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 is blacktop sidewalk the old parking lot? We need a concrete entryway into that, that's not how you do an entryway, it wasn't in the design. Just north of York.
Down the northwest or northeast corner.
And then there's a little spot there that was rock, there probably should be blacktop right there next to where that apron would be in, and we also need to look at doing a curb on the east side of the sidewalk of Thirty-Six Saloon Side, there's no, there's no barrier between the sidewalk and, and, and the parking lot, you should have a curb there. Okay, well, we should.
And there's no ending of the side.
They do, they do.
There's, it's a kind of a free draw where you can put the bumpers at, there's, there's no start and finish line there of the south side of the parking lot, it needs to be designated. If you're gonna landscape through there, that needs to be part of that planning as well.
The south side or west side?
South side of the parking lot, where it comes into the, the bank entrance, I guess.
South side will be curbed, I'm assuming.
Well, yeah, but is there enough room there to do any of, anything else, I don't know.
There's plenty of room there.
There is, well, bottom line, we need, we need to get this figured out and, and have our, our, uh, project raise a bid about the same time we have Community Crossing round one, twenty-twenty-three to bid, we might save a little money, mobilization, demobilization, maybe, I don't know, uh, just thought. Maybe I think too much.
What's the grant submission?
For.
This.
She's about ready.
For Creating Spaces?
I think she's going to try to get it out within the next, probably within, what, the next two weeks?
I'd say so.
Now, we have, I believe it's sixty days to raise the match. Uh, if we don't raise the match, we don't get anything, I mean.
And the match addition, how, how's the match determined?
It's fifty percent match, I mean, it's whatever we determine it to be.
Whatever we can come up with, they'll match.
Up to fifty thousand dollars.
Up to fifty.
So if we decided we wanted to go after fifty thousand, then we have to raise fifty thousand, and the town itself cannot fund any part of that.
That's be up, okay.
So.
Well.
Any business, any individual can give up to thirty-five percent of whatever our match fund would be.
Okay.
So basically, like, if it was fifty thousand, I think you can give up to.
Can we use in-kind labor?
Do what?
Can we use in-kind labor?
No, um, no, I don't think so, I think they can a little bit, depending on what it is, but for the most part, no, I mean. So.
How many lights, looking at three or four lights there?
They're talking about four lights.
What are they, six thousand?
Properly light the parking.
Six thousand, seven thousand, please, probably. Oh, yeah.
I think they were pushing five.
Yeah, they were somewhere around.
Speaking of lights, did, what's the status of one that got taken out by the cemetery, do we, do we hit and run?
Hit and run.
Have we entered into insurance yet?
Yeah, I don't have a bill for it yet.
Okay, um, yeah, it happened, when did that happen, it happened, uh, between New Year's and Christmas, I don't know, it was, um.
Smoke the pole in two phases.
Best time to drink and drive?
What's that?
New Year's or Christmas?
New Year's and Christmas?
Nobody's looking for that at all?
Twenty-third.
I'm sorry?
December twenty-third.
Twenty-third, right before Christmas, huh, okay. So anyway, we, we talked about the parking lot, you know, another thing, uh, um, comp plan, you know, we haven't done one, gosh, conference comp plan since.
Twenty-fifteen.
Twenty-fifteen?
I think so.
And Cindy brought up all back, really need to update that, you should have one about every five years, been seven years, we, we need to do a comp plan. It's just a comprehensive plan for the whole town and big thick book.
Yeah, we don't really do it, we hire someone.
Well, yeah, we, we do, we hire an engineer to do that, uh, there's OKRA grants to do that, and it doesn't count against any other OKRA grants, you have outstanding. Uh, it's a nice product to kind of guide various boards and committees.
And you have to have one to apply for.
Yeah, it comes in handy to apply for money quite often, they, they like to see a current comp plan, so they think you're actually, you know.
I actually have to send letters to them every year talking about the progress we've made toward actually doing that, so it would be good if you actually did that.
Okay, so.
But we, I mean, compared to what it was, we've done a lot of the things.
We have done a lot, we really need to get out there with content and re, with plan revisited, I think somebody sent me a copy, I printed it out, took a ream of paper, uh, might have been you, but, uh. And typically, we put out requests for, 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 for proposals on that, uh, I wish Cindy's not here, but we, we, uh, could have her put together an RFP and, and, uh, send it out there and see who wants to, to put together, well, we can interview them, that'd be fun. Interview a few engineers, the comp plan, we've done that a few times, uh.
Yep.
Chris looks excited.
Score.
So I don't know, what, what do you guys think, that's something we should?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Well, so, uh, you want to get home Cindy and say, hey, we want to do an RFP for, uh, a comp plan, and, uh, she'll probably know how to proceed from there. Uh, as far as getting OKRA funding and.
So we don't, it won't get done this year? Be twenty-twenty-four more than likely?
Yeah.
So then you get back on like a five-year rotation.
Well, that'd be good.
Then twenty-four.
You don't think we get it done for the end of the year?
Didn't seem like it took me.
We've got three-hundred-and-sixty, what, is it?
Two.
Two days.
This isn't, no, this isn't a week.
Oh.
Well, I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, well, I don't think I got much else to talk about. Oh, did Roger, do you know, did, you know, I talked to Roger, you were on vacation for Christmas sometime there. You know, I asked him about updating the cost in Anderson, did he ever get any cost to you on that yet, or?
But I anticipate him saying.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see.
One thing I'm concerned about there on Anderson is the, the sidewalk portion of that.
Down to Pine Drive?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, where you gonna put it?
We were gonna put it on the other side of the utilities, and I think that's gonna be problematic because we don't have right-of-ways in those areas. So, you know, I, I don't know legally if we would have to purchase right-of-ways.
Lord, not again.
Or, uh, you know, if, if they, if the owners would just say, yeah, we don't mind if you put that there, I, I don't know if there's a legal agreement that can be entered into or not, but I think, uh, I think that's a holdup on the sidewalks.
I didn't catch the front of that, I was talking to Bill.
On Anderson Street, there's really no place to put sidewalks, uh, in between the street and the utility poles, so Roger was looking at putting them on the other side of the utility poles, well, that's outside of our right-of-way, and, uh.
So you could either purchase the ground or you could come to an agreement with the property owner. A lot of property owners probably wouldn't fight you on that, but you never know.
Yeah, and, you know.
Especially if they've seen one, some folks were getting.
Right.
So I didn't know if there was a legal document that, that we could go to them and say, hey, we'd like to do this.
Get as many as.
Or.
We're coming to agree to it and we'll deal with the ones that are.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that it's in town, we could.
Which the north side of Anderson isn't.
Well, Shelsky's on it, it's in town.
Yeah, I thought it was from there to.
So the part we'd want to be putting the sidewalk.
Shelsky's toward town is?
Going west.
Toward Forty-one.
Going west.
Okay.
I thought it was to, yeah.
I didn't realize.
At least that one strip of houses there, yeah. Well, on the north side of there of Anderson, you only talking about, you have the bank, you have Dollar General, whoever owns that, because they don't.
Couple houses.
Then you have two houses. We're talking for property owners.
You've got more than two houses.
I think, I think the bank would be pretty easy, uh.
Well, the bank's not gonna be an issue, I don't think.
I, I would think so.
Dollar General's gonna be an issue with their parking lot and the mess they have out there, those semis, that keeps knocking down the speed limit sign out there, the, I think the original sign of the post got taken out, and we put up a shorty thirty-mile-an-hour sign with concrete blocks and a, it looks like an old tire rim as a base, and it keeps, keep knocking, knocking.
Have you ever watched him pull in there?
I have, I see it a lot, he blocks the road a lot of times, some of them just pull up out front, they don't even try, but some of them tried back in there and they just have a mess.
Well, Dave's got people driving through his yard, we've got signs being knocked over, we got street poles being knocked over.
Yeah, yeah, well, people don't pay attention, I, I, you know, it's illegal to drive, by the way, people, turn signals are law now, use your turn signal effective January first. Also thought it was, yeah, it's a state law now, you have to use your turn, they can pull you over.
We're looking at bill for it.
I'm not, I'm just looking at, uh, and then also the pursuit, they changed the pursuit laws, I saw that.
I thought if you're in a buggy.
But, uh, buggy, but, but where were we going here?
Where do you get your information at?
I did see that today.
State website?
Bet you're watching the news.
You have too much free time if you can visit that.
Well, I get emails from all over the place, uh, what are we talking, oh, yeah, just distraction, turn cell phones, miss illegally cell phone, or, you know, it's an applicable offense, my God, I see so many people on cell phones. But you, 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 you see, an officer, obviously they're gonna put it down.
Could you deputize all of us, please?
Deputize all of us.
This is the academy training.
Yeah, yeah.
Special deputies.
Uh-huh, that's not a good idea, uh.
Anderson Street.
Anderson Street.
Anderson Street, that's where we were at, and we got off on tangents, the signs and poles.
We did?
Well.
Yeah. We did.
I'm trying to inform you folks to use your turn signal.
I always use my turn signal.
So the answer, Anderson Street, there is, there is a legal document we can do if that's the route we want to go.
I almost probably just.
So how far down are you gonna put gutters in that, are you talking the same distance or?
Yeah, probably just down to a little bit, right around the bottom of that little slope where it feeds off into the ditch, uh, off by, going off by docks.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, i- i- that's a whole problem out there, that first stretch of the road, the storm waters just.
Terrible.
Ate up the roads. Then you have a big puddle, people always dodging that, you gotta watch out there, the Dollar General. Okay, well, I'll put, I'll put asking questions.
Is that all you got, Jeff?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Can we go on?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you got?
Troy?
Oh.
Got anything? Bruce, you got anything?
No, not really, other than that, we had trouble with the wells freezing up last week.
So what was that all about?
That cold snap hit.
Yeah.
That cold, and water will freeze.
Yeah?
So, I, I've talked, Mike and I have both talked to Jeff about maybe, uh, insulating those buildings out there, putting ceiling, drop ceilings in them, insulating them. And, uh, that could be a big deal.
Do we?
Luckily, there wasn't a fire that night, they froze up Thursday night when the storm blew in, 'cause I was out there early, probably.
So.
I heard it froze up already.
The water's not flowing enough.
So I have, there's those, those vertical turbines, the motors up top spins the, the shaft.
Mm-hmm.
And where there's packing, there's always water that's supposed to leak, it lubricates that shaft. Well, there's a little stuffing box there, and if that thing leaks and holds water, it's just too cold and it can't drain back, that'll freeze fast enough, and just that little bit of ice will lock that motor up and trip it out.
So do we need to leave a faucet on?
Well, everybody probably was, 'cause the towels.
Everybody went to bed, so there wasn't any water flowing, you know, the pumps were kicking on while people were sleeping, that's when the temperature really dropped, didn't take them long to freeze, so.
So we were able to follow them out and get them going again, and we put a heat lamp on them.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we didn't have any problem the rest of the time, we switched some wells around. But, I mean, that's a problem, I think a lot of places have this problem, we've had them multiple places. But what we did was, what Bruce said, is we built the shacks over like you got, but we insulated the, uh, the vents, and kept all the air flow from getting in there, and that made a huge difference, we didn't have, places we normally had problems, we didn't have problems this time after we did that. And we put the heat lamp on it, um, so that might be, plus those buildings are huge, the ceiling is so big.
Okay.
Something to think about, yeah, 'cause it.
Could we just pass norm, is it not get that cold again?
But, a little say, I will throw this out there as a suggestion, because we have alarms everywhere else, we don't have alarms on the water plant with a tower to build, or to build low, or a pump trips out, we don't know until the next day when we get there. So, just like that situation, you know, if we were getting there later on that day and the tower was.
Maybe we need to put cameras.
You know, we, we had no way of knowing until we got there.
In the air pool, so that it would see it?
Well, have you seen that kind of system other places, I assume?
Well, we could actually use the same system we have on.
Seems like it happens a lot.
Lift stations and all that.
Okay.
And we already have an account.
They hit the poles.
You could put one of those on there.
Even, you have to get up over the curb on the side of, they hit them.
Are you guys hearing any of this?
I heard it, yes.
Wellhead, uh.
Yeah, that last one we just set up down at the sewer plant, I think it was about six grand, so.
Well, uh, uh, how many wellheads, we talking, six?
But I think we could do probably a cheaper one, right, that would just do like power fail, 'cause we always have those, every time it flickers, it trips everything out.
Mm-hmm.
Tower level, those would be the big ones, because once you're, if your tower gets to a certain level, then you know you got a problem, it's like you don't need to have all the alarms for everything else.
Well, I figured, can we, why don't you put something together and give it to Jeff, or we can just discuss, it's probably a good idea.
We're desperate.
We'll come out this week.
Better be prepared.
One of the other things that we can talk about too is, uh, getting some quotes on a generator for the top of the waste of our treatment plant. We know that's an area that we're lacking in, and, uh, just trying to ballpark, get some budget numbers on.
Okay, so, okay, would it be gas, natural gas, diesel, what would it be?
Still, still looking at, I have Brian Nevers come out Friday and, and look at it, and he was gonna look at some different options, whether diesel was cheaper or LP would be cheaper. And, uh, I've got another outfit coming, uh, Tuesday, um, to give us a quote on it also.
Okay, while we're on sewer, I guess we should bring up, uh, I and I, we need some kind of I and I plan.
We do, definitely.
And, you know, we've got a receipt letter from IDM, uh, saying they would like to see more of that, so, I don't know, we, we've done smoke testing before. What do you?
I think it's been about twenty-one years since we've done so.
We did some. Smoke testing in the last ten years.
Smoke testing achievements.
Yeah.
I would start there, and then you find your bigger stuff and you can televise and.
Yeah.
And, and go from there, the smoke's gonna show you any cross connections you have with stormwater and things like that, the easy fixes, all right.
Yeah, we, we have a very, uh, detailed report somewhere from our last smoke test here from, uh, uh, Structure Point, uh, we found a lot of things.
I think you fixed some of those.
We did, we did, but we, we need to have a plan, I, I, I don't know, would, can U-Mac come up with that, or do we want, how do you want to do that?
Well, we can work with, probably can work with Roger a little bit on that, but we could, I mean, that could be something that you write down, like you, you talked about your tree trimming. Because we do that with the sewer system.
Yeah, we should, we should come up with a, a, a plan like that for, for I and I, and, and, and have something, uh, in a folder to hand, hand IDM, not only just to hand IDM, but actually to, to try to fix some of the infiltration, um.
What would three be, four squadrons, what's three?
I don't know, um, I'm sorry, interrupted or got off on tangents again, but, uh, you guys got anything else you want to tell us about? I got a question for Jeff, again. Well, first of all, John, John, what are you, what are you up to, you got something to?
I'm just listening.
Just here for the entertainment.
Oh, you're here for the entertainment?
Four show, four show.
Okay, no, you mentioned, uh, we. Okay, no, you mentioned, uh, when we were doing the budget, Jeff, two items, a mini excavator and a new digger truck for the electric department. I mean, have you, uh?
Yeah, we're we're updating the quotes on those, because I got them back in, I want to say, like, October.
Okay.
So we want to make sure things are current.
Yeah.
I'll bring those to you when I'm ready.
So, uh, yeah, the mini excavator thing, what, uh, I mean, how do you foresee using that? I mean, I, that's a question that first comes to my mind. I mean, basically, just for water leaks or?
Um, basically, anything that we want to dig with, uh, but backhoe's handy. Uh, specifically Doug was was really high on the the mini excavator, especially down there by, uh, Martin street where it goes down through that ditch. We took that two or three days and cleaned those ditch out with the, uh, backhoe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a lot easier, according to him, if we had an excavator with a scoop, and you come in there and and you don't have to shut down the whole road. With the backhoe, we're in parallel.
Right, right.
Perpendicular to the road.
Right, you can't get the angle.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's.
You can do a one eighty on the excavator, whereas in the backhoe, you can't do a one eighty and work.
Right, right, right. So, you know, that would be helpful in that respect. Uh, I tell you, I, I don't know if you get one big enough or not, but boy, I like that that little mulching deal that, uh, Collins had on their excavator. That whole.
Yeah, that's gonna take a lot of horsepower, remember?
Well, it it probably would. I don't I don't know that anything we're looking at, that has guts to do it, but, um, yeah, it'd just be a handy little piece.
Well, you know, the option there, instead of having riprap on that hillside, you go in there and grade all that down and put it in the grass and then and then go in there with your excav, our 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 skid steer, and you just do that. I don't know why there's riprap on there. I guess to the.
Too steep.
It's too steep?
Yeah.
Ah, doggone it.
Yeah, there there's no way I can I can mow that thing.
Okay.
No way. So my plan was, we're knocking it down, and then I'll just keep going the weed control to it in in there two or three times during the summer.
Okay. Will?
Covered everything you want to cover?
I don't know, just keep popping in my head.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold the paper?
Aye.